So it is Thursday, October 28th. It's looks like it's 4:01 right now. I'm gonna call this joint work session of the Lacy City Council and the North Thurston Public School Board of Directors to order. We have an agenda before us. My city council, can I get a motion for approval?
Move to approve the agenda as published.
Thank you.
Second is certainly discussion. See, now I'll appear the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, then the most carries, and we have approved agenda. And first off, I just want to go ahead.
I'm gonna tell you, Ed just texted that he can't find the link.
Okay. We'll have someone on our side send that to him so he can get on. And I just, uh, let's just go around real quick and let's do some introductions. Cynthia?
Deputy Mayor of City of Lacey.
Lenny?
Lenny Greenstein, Council.
Mike?
Michael Stedman, Lacey City Council.
Carolyn?
Carolyn Cox, Lacy City Council.
Malcolm?
Malcolm Miller, Lacy City Council.
I will turn it over to Gretchen and do some introductions on your side.
Great, good afternoon. We're really thankful to have another joint meeting with you. And to introduce myself, I'm Gretchen Melissa. I'm the current board president for North Thurston Public Schools. Today, we also have Graham.
Hi, Graham Sacrisson. Four.
Dave?
Dave, New Creek District Five for the school district.
And we're just shy two board members that we're expecting are running just a bit behind.
Great. Well, then, um, let's just go right into it and I'll turn it over to the next agenda item, which is the calendar and Monte's. Monte, on?
Yes, I am.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. So I'll share my screen. I have a PowerPoint presentation I'd like to use this afternoon.
Okay. How does that look? Does that look good?
Um, we see your entire computer screen and not just.
It's not in presentation.
Gretchen, I am here.
Great, thanks for joining us, Chuck. We're glad you're here.
There.
There you go.
There you go. That's good.
Okay. We'll see. Okay. Technology is always a little bit of an adventure. So this evening, I get to share with you about our work with balanced calendar and share with you where we're at. What is a balanced calendar? Talk about kind of what we are looking at as for benefits, things that we're considering, some resources on our website. And then I'll be able to answer any questions or hopefully I'll be able to answer any questions that you have. So we formed a committee of it's a little bit over 50 people now. And we have teachers, we have classified staff, parents, students, community partners, administration. We have participants from the city. We have Sue Fallish and Cody Lee, and they're great partners to work with, and they've been serving with us in our committee. You know, it's difficult. You know, you have 50 people on a committee, and that's quite a large group. But it's difficult to get everyone on the committee that you wish you could or that expressed desires to serve on a committee. So we will be doing a survey in the future. So we'll be able to get the voices, opinions, thoughts of staff, students, families, and community. So this workaround, uh, balanced calendars isn't just locally, but it's statewide. There's really a high interest in looking at balanced calendars. But, you know, regionally, our neighboring districts are looking at it. And we were able to access a grant through OSPI. We were awarded some dollars to help us as we go through this exploration process this coming year. So here's the timeline of what we've been doing so far and what we see as next steps. So our first meeting occurred last May as a committee. And one of the things that we did was we were able to join a statewide summit, a virtual summit that was hosted by the E S D in Yakima. And then we've been meeting monthly. We took a couple of months off in the summer, but then we've started up again. So we've been having great discussions in our, in our committees. We're looking at in January, giving an update to the Board of Directors. And then also we'll have three community forums where we'll be able to present information and receive feedback from attendees. We're pointing towards giving a recommendation to the Board of Directors in May. And then depending, of course, on that recommendation, it'll dictate next steps. So if we were to make the recommendation to the Board of Directors to move forward with a balanced calendar, then we would be looking at a couple of year process as we transition to a full balanced calendar. So a balanced calendar is not year round school. It's just taking the number of days that we currently have and allocating them differently. And on this screen, there's a couple of examples of a balanced calendar. The one is a 45, 15 day calendar. So the change there would be you'd have a 15 day break in the fall, a 15 day break in the winter, and a 15 day break in the spring with a shorter summer. And then the 45, 10 calendar, the difference there is the fall break would be 10 days and the spring break would be 10 days. And the whole idea again is to shorten, shortening up that summer break to reduce the impact of learning loss on students. So for the summer learning loss, the research shows that when you compare a student that lives in poverty to one that does not, during the school year, they, they're learning at the relatively same pace. And then when the summer comes, there's this gap that gets created between, again, the student that's not in poverty versus the one that is. So the student in poverty gets a little behind. And then every summer after that, that gap continues to grow. And I like to show just a really a short video, so a couple of minutes that really clearly illustrates the situation that the balanced calendar is trying to address.
Let's look at two children, one from a middle income. Family, the other from one of the millions of low income American families.
Monte, we only seen your PowerPoint presentation. You may have to exit out of screen share and then reshare your screen with the video. I think there's two boxes you wanna mark when you share your screen to get the video sound to play where we can hear it.
Can you see it now?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Let's look at two children, one from a middle income family, the other from one of the millions of low income American families. As the two kids head off to kindergarten, look what happens. The middle income child starts out with a six month lead. The low income child is already falling behind because of a lack of access to early reading and preschool education. During their year in kindergarten, in the same school and classroom, the two children will learn at about the same rate. So we'll move them both forward nine months. But look what happens in that first summer between kindergarten and first grade. Our middle income child moves ahead about a month in reading because learning of one kind or another continues over the summer. The low income child falls back about two months. So when school begins again, when they go back for first grade, the gap between them has already widened. During first grade, again, they move ahead at about the same rate, another nine months. That next summer, the activities and lifestyle of the middle income family keep that child moving forward. But the low income child has fewer opportunities to reinforce good habits like reading, and that child falls farther behind. Then we come to second grade, and again, our two children learn at the same rate. But the summer after second grade sets our low income child back again, and our middle income child moves forward again, and the gap widens again. By just the third grade, the two children are already far apart. By the end of fifth grade, the gap between the children is two and a half to three years. It will keep growing through middle school. So you see, without addressing what's happening during the summer, it is impossible to ever catch up. It's impossible to close the gap, no matter how much high quality learning goes on from September to June. Every year, the gap widens.
So that's a really, again, a great video that illustrates the situation. Oops. I am sorry.
Chances are, you didn't start learning the day you get kindergarten.
Hey, Monte, if I may.
Cool day end.
Yeah.
Or summer begin.
Just a second. The video doesn't take into consideration if the child has a disability or, or something like dyslexia, which I had as, as a child. So that, that will take low income family, you know, children even further behind.
Yeah, that's a good point.
There's more to the presentation that Monte's going to share about intercession programming that we'll cover next. Monte, are you okay?
Yeah. Yeah, just a second. There we go. Are we, are we good again?
Yes.
Yep. Okay, great. Okay. Well, now I'm having a hard time getting it to advance.
Maybe hit the arrow key, your right arrow key.
Yeah, it's not, it's not working. I'll start over.
So. Getting that up, can I just say, I'm so sorry. This is Jennifer Thomas, and I am present. I don't know if that's needed for the minutes. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay. So besides the academic benefit for students, the research shows that students have improved attendance, fewer behavior issues, just overall better well being. So you could think that with these, you know, extended breaks that are happening more frequently throughout the year, it's creating a better, you know, rested student. And maybe parents are, you know, scheduling doctor's appointments and other things like that during those, those breaks. So just what we were kind of mentioning during these breaks, we're able to offer intercession programming. And it can be really tailored to the needs of the students. So it could be remediation, or it could be acceleration. It could look the way that we would like it to look to meet the needs of our kids. So another positive impact of a balanced calendar is just like for students, staff are healthier. They're having less burnout, less stress, they're better rested, they're able to do their jobs better. Also, um, there's the opportunity for staff to earn money during these breaks. If we're serving kids, we need staff on site to not only provide instruction, but we need operational staff to also help us to serve kids. So they're able to, again, earn some dollars during those times. And then programming impacts. So we made sure in our committee that we had representation from childcare providers like the Y and the Boys and Girls Club. A balanced calendar would affect their programming. Also need to think about the impact it would have on student activities, sports seasons. And then also, when you're thinking about students that are transitioning in and out of a balanced calendar or kind of a more traditional calendar, some of the things that we would need to think about as the, you know, calendars wouldn't exactly match up. Um, school operations. So in the summertime, we, we have a lot of work that's happening in the school district. We have a lot of construction that's happening. When we're doing these projects, we're trying to maximize every day possible to get the work done so we can open up school on time. We do refresh cycles. Maybe we're painting classrooms or we're doing these tech replacements during the summer. Another thing that we need to take in, into consideration are HVAC systems. Not all of our schools currently have air conditioning. And just to be thoughtful around that of, you know, going forward and making sure that our staff and kids have a great environments to learn and work in. We have a district, of course, website. We have a page on our website, and it's, it's really good. We have a committee membership there, agendas, minutes, presentations, calendars, and also a frequently asked questions section. It's just, it has a wealth of information there. If you go to the frequently asked question section, you can find pretty much any question that you can think of. And you, you'll find some information about that. So I'd encourage you to go to our district website to check that out. And then lastly, we would love your feedback. We're sharing this with everyone. We want to have a really, you know, get, get input from our community at large. And if you'd like to do so, you can use this email address. And then please include balanced calendar in the subject line. So that concludes my presentation. Open to any questions that you may have.
Go ahead, Chuck.
Yeah, years ago, we kind of resolved some of the issues with the boundary issue campaign that we did. I'm wondering whether we've done any testing over the last year or so with regards to each school to find out whether there's a, whether we're in balance with each school or there are some schools that are a little farther behind in terms of the balance between those enriched students and those children in poverty.
You know, we, the, that was a lot of work. You know, we made a big investment in adjusting our boundaries to create a better equity, not only in enrollment, but demographics in our schools. And it really turned out well, surprisingly well. I feel like we're in a better spot than we were five, six years ago before the boundary adjustments.
So Mike, is my big question is, is would, would this balanced calendar, obviously makes a kind of sense to start kindergarten, you know, preschool all the way to, are you thinking all the way through high school? Or are you thinking this is like maybe through middle school?
No, it would be for all of our grades that we're serving.
Deputy Mayor?
Cynthia has her question.
I see it.
Um, actually, my grandkids kind of went through that type of a system, but in other countries. But, but the question I had was, have you thought about people on low incomes having to buy more supplies to keep going for a longer period of time? Whether that would be, um, I mean, I, I would think it would be, um, balanced out because they wouldn't have to pay for childcare. But I, but I'm just wondering about, you know, how you have to, every summer, people run out and go buy supplies and clothing and stuff to get ready for school. Has that been thought about as far as finances for low income?
Yeah, we think it would be very similar, but again, it's the same number of school days. And so some of those school supplies that you'd be using, you just wouldn't use them up so quickly during the calendar. But they would just need to be mindful that they would, you know, need to conserve those, you know, whatever they could be crayons, pencils, paper, you know, for later in the year, just different times of the year.
Okay. So when, when, I think you might mention this at the beginning, but when are you planning on going in front of the school board for direction on this? When, when can we see this come to be?
We're giving a recommendation to the board in May.
And so would that then start immediately or how, how, how would it go?
So we would look at the following school year as being a transition year. And so I can't tell you this afternoon exactly what that transition year would look like, but we couldn't just jump in fully into a balanced calendar the next school year. There's a number of things that we would need to take care of to, you know, to make that happen. So. Yes, yes.
School year would start, right? Or would start in July then?
So for the, for the transition year or when you would begin a balanced calendar, when?
When you had balanced calendar, what, what would you expect the first day of school be?
So it would, it would be whatever this, you know, the local district would determine. So it could be the beginning of August, or it could be the middle of August, for instance. But it would be, you know, be determined. I mean, you know, we'd go through a process. Another thing that people wonder about is what about holidays? And of course, we would always recognize the, the holidays that we have been, so.
Yeah, because we obviously have to start a lot sooner, earlier because you're, you're just pushing the school year out, right? And so you only have a, a couple week break in the summer.
Between a five and six week break in the summertime.
Okay.
The, um, the school year will typically end in June, and there will be a summer break. You just start earlier, and then after approximately 45 days of instruction, you have a three week break with, depending on how the committee looks at the calendar. The, the plan is to have, what are we calling them, Monte, like zone forums?
Yeah, some forum, forum meetings, community forums at, at three different schools in January.
The different high school, the comprehensive high schools. And then the board will receive an update from the committee in January, and the committee will continue to do this work. And as Monte mentioned, it's a, it's a statewide effort to have districts look at a balanced calendar. So we're benefiting from statewide summits. We have a number of board members and committee members able to attend a summit. I think it was last week that we heard national speakers on this particular topic.
Well, it makes a lot of sense to me. I know my daughter basically went to school year rounds when she was a kid. That's, that's what she had no choice. You know, she had to go into, you know, summer school because, because we needed that time because we were working. So I, Councilor Stedman, and then I'll go to Lenny.
Thanks, Mayor. You know, I, I really like the idea about this in general, especially for early, early years in the learning process. But with, I, I believe, well, at least on the fence anyways. Sorry about my Monday night football voice, by the way. So I'm on the fence because let's say you're a student athlete or, you know, high school in general. It's supposed, I think that's the, we're supposed to be preparing them for college, and most colleges are on the summer break. But I mean, if we're gonna move to something like that, I don't know what it's called, something 15 or something 10. I like the 10 better because it's a more balanced. I, I know I did a lot of sports and a lot of education and a lot of catch up because of, you know, low income family and, and learning disability and, but a burnout because that extra catch up takes its toll as well as, you know, you're already busy schedule. So just stuff to think about, but I do like it on the surface, if you will.
The districts that implement a balanced calendar, if they do a 45 days on and then a three week break, students who are identified for intervention services in reading or math, they might go to school one week out of that three week break and still have a break, just like teachers might teach one week of the three week break. But it does provide an opportunity, if you think about secondary students, middle school and high school students, when you're on a 45 day instructional schedule, that's basically the end of a quarter. And sometimes children fall behind, and it would give students an opportunity to catch up during that three week break. And then everyone's starting up again, and they will have hopefully caught up with their, with their peers on their homework and everything in order to stay up with their peers and hopefully pass, you know, that, like Monte was saying, students that are on a balanced calendar, not only does it help children living in poverty, all students experience greater academic success. And I think part of it is because of that structure to help kids catch up who may have fallen behind. Not only, you know.
If I may, one thing before, you know, also, I think the continued even presence of somebody from outside your family or outside the environment away from school, it helps prevent, you know, abuse, stuff like that, you know, and, and, and early recognition because, you know, dyslexia with me was caught late. You know, and it took me two years of going to, to school after school to just catch up to that reading ability, which I think if I was more, you know, in the public eye, if you will, it would have been discovered a lot quicker. So there's, there's a lot more positives than negatives, I believe.
Lenny and then Ed, real quick, and then we're over on our, on our time.
Yeah, just a quick question, but I think you actually, it was already answered. So even though all this, they're looking at this statewide, it is still district by district. So the state, it, it, this district could do it even if Olympia doesn't, for instance. It doesn't, it's not necessarily statewide.
Yeah, that's correct. And it's, and then the presentation, I gave examples of two calendars. You know, it could be a little different than those two calendars. It's just what we decide upon.
Thank you.
Yeah, Councilmember Compo. So have you given consideration to how this is going to affect the budget? Is this going to change? Is it gonna be more expensive? Do you have an idea what this is gonna cost?
You know, that is a definite consideration. Anytime you're making a change, you want to think about, you know, the dollars too. That's the very real issue. We're still having the same number of school days, so our staffing should be relatively the same. I had mentioned before, you know, we're taking into consideration, for instance, HVAC systems, ensuring that all the buildings have cooling, so we'd need to take that in consideration, how to cover that and the timing of that. There'd also be some impact to construction in the district about lengthening out construction projects a little bit if we were to do a balanced calendar. In our committee, we have subcommittees that are also meeting, and they're covering these different areas. And so we're right in the process at this time of gathering that information to better inform us as we go forward.
Great. Well, thank you for that update. You know, I think on, on paper, I'm very excited about, I think it's all again, it's gonna do is help, help our kids. And so, and as has been pointed out, the, the middle income and wealthier families, they're doing this already. I mean, their, their kids are going to summer school as, you know, all the daycare during this, during the summer is basically a continuation of school. And so be able to look at that and be able to provide that sort of ongoing education to lower income families is, I think, gonna be a big, big game changer. So I look forward to hearing how that all turns out. So next up on our agenda is the outreach services and the community resource unit and updates from that from our Chief Almoda.
Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. Really a pleasure to present to both the city council and to the school board, school committee, sorry. So we're gonna talk today about our outreach services and related homelessness. I'm gonna share my screen, I hope. Okay, are you seeing it okay?
Yep.
Yeah.
Awesome. Okay. All right. So here we are. By the way, my name's Robert Almoda, and the chief of police for City of Lacey. It's good to see you all. There we go. So our agenda today, I know we have a packed agenda for the entire joint meeting, so I'll be rather, rather quick. Because I know we want to have a robust conversation on these topics. So we'll describe homelessness, talk about a response model, talk about our new mobile outreach team and successes we're having there, our rep response team and those successes, the community resource unit. Our rep response team and those successes, the community resource unit and tools and services that are being applied to this issue. So as you all know, homelessness is a multi dimensional issue. People are homeless for a variety of reasons and a variety of ways. A lot of the causal factors are life circumstance, which can be economic, a lack of support network, a lack of everyday life skills. So that's just one circumstance. Another one would be mentally ill or substance abusers. And really mental illness will run the gamut of the spectrum from being merely eccentric to grossly mentally disabled. And everything in between. Obviously, these folks are obviously disorganized and irrational in their thought process. It's not always the case, but often the case. And very frequently, they're in survival mode, which does not support a rational long term decision making. There's often a criminal element among the homeless population. They hide among the homeless population to avoid detection by law enforcement. Often they're there because of a lack of housing or employment opportunities. A lack of a discharge plan after they leave custody or a housing plan. And frankly, it's it's an environment where they can prey on the weaker. And and those folks are reluctant to report to law enforcement. And then there's an element of the homeless that are homeless by choice. They're counterculture, they're nomadic. And it's just one of the elements that we see. And the Lacey model response to homeless is really an extension of our tradition of service, which is really the focus on community caretaking. We do outreach outreach and relationship building, which frankly, it usually takes twelve to seventeen contacts to build trust with folks. People in the homeless population have been. Disillusioned by their contact contact with bureaucratic systems of government. And so we really have to fight that that history of disappointment. We identify and provide coordinated entry to social services, provide emergency services intervention. Work to assist folks on the custom homelessness system to avoid becoming homeless and adding to the issue. Our first generation of this was really to work with Community Action Council with a Community Outreach Coordinator. Many of you know Mitch Mitchell, did outstanding work, really was a great individual, well known in the community. Really started off our efforts in a strong in a strong effort. Now we moved on to the second generation, which is our mobile outreach team, which is provided by Olympic Health and Recovery and Joe Avalos and his team. And really I'll talk a little bit more about that. As I talk about our model, understand that we do enforcement as needed, but it's not our first action. It's usually not even our second action, really work on, I guess, our community caretaking focus and getting people into services versus into the criminal justice system. We do trespass often it's on a civil trespass, not a criminal trespass. We try to find long term solutions to chronic problems. That's the that's the focus of our community resource unit. Officer Williams, Officer Beltran. And we really work with partnerships in the community along such as with Wash Dot and Department of Ecology. To address issues of joint concern and we'll talk about that a little bit. So here's our mobile outreach team. It's a four person crisis response team made up of two peer counselors. And two clinicians that work as case managers. They work seven days a week and two person pairs with an overlap day. And they started onboarding August twenty third and they've been on their own for a better part of about six weeks at this point. And again, they're from behavioral health services. And so in those first six weeks by themselves, they've really done some amazing things, just to give you a kind of a scope of their work. First week of their on the job, they're out there doing twenty nine social service referrals. They're doing twenty attempts to contact with patrol calls and follow ups. They have a police radio, they monitor the radio, they listen for radio calls where they think they may be able to respond and assist on the call. Sometimes they'll be the primary responder on the call if it's not any type of crime really identifiable. Officers will go out and will provide a safety net for them if needed. But it's really been working well as far as the interaction, integration with patrol and the mobile outreach team. And just some of the highlights for the team, we've done detainers to get people mental health treatment with the DCR. We assisted several people with courtesy of transportation to their city of origin. We've helped folks who are stranded in Lacey to get fuel to go back to Spokane and other places. We provided medical equipment to the four different people and that the idea of bandages, first aid, those type of things. Actually, working with the fire department regarding some frequent nine one one caller to help reduce the impact to our nine one one system. They distribute bags, mini bags, thirty bags in this of canned canned goods and nutrition. We also provide clothing to unhoused clients because of the the bad weather. Socks, clothing, gloves, things like that that make frankly, life a little more tolerable for them. We get them connected to the VA hub and we've also helped folks that are experiencing domestic violence. It's also important to note that the mobile average team also works with folks that are experiencing other types of crisis. I'm not just homeless and it's really a very flexible and viable team. We also have the rep response team. I should say the mobile average team is funded by city council, a special amendment providing that service. They also provided funding for this, which is rep response, which is two seasonal workers along with a pickup truck that work to clean up abandoned homeless encampments on public property. They also remove litter, debris, abandoned shopping carts and clean graffiti on public property. And there they are, Brett Rachel. Just a small example of some of the stuff they're doing in the field. You'll see a lot less abandoned shopping carts and abandoned debris throughout the community because of these these guys' hard work. It's really pretty amazing what they've been able to do in the last month or so that they've been active. This is a small example of kind of camp they do. This is a camp at on the Department of Transportation property at Third Avenue. And it is in October and just an amazing amount of work to really make sure that we're maintaining our city properly. This is the Sleater Kenny Hill. Again, an abandoned camp has been posted for three days and then it came in and removed the debris that's left. Then, of course, our community resource unit, Officer Beltran, Officer Jimmy Williams. They've been working even before. Our first generation, really going out and making sure between them and MOT that we're making contact with every homeless person that we possibly find every single day. To provide that constant case management and not just doing episodic outreach, but really continuity of care and trying to find better outcomes for folks. And that's really the Jimmy and Justin really worked to facilitate that case management with MOT to make sure that we find improved outcomes. As again, some of the basic work that they do, provide basic necessities, food, clothing and shelter. They do, they help to assist folks to find inpatient outpatient care. We really had some amazing successes on these these sites I'm going to tell you about. By counseling services, mental health services, animal services. So we really run the gamut. And I'm going to show you here. So these are the ideas of the encampments with Department of Transportation and DOE. We entered into an MOU with Wash Dot and also the DOE to really work on on their properties so that we can enforce laws, but also stabilize the problem so it wouldn't get any worse and start to work on better outcomes for people that were there. So we started in December twenty twenty in the beginning of these agreements. Sleater Kenny, for example, had thirty two homeless folks there. It's now down to three. IFI Park at twelve, it's now down to one. Exit one oh nine, which was at four, it's now down to zero. Department Enterprise, I'm sorry, Department of Ecology, Desmond Drive had twenty six, now they're at half to thirteen. So in December, we started with seventy four individuals identified. Now we're down to seventeen, which is a seventy seven percent reduction over the past year. So really amazing work, both combined by CRU and with MOT. And it's really important to show that we're not just displacing the problem, we're finding better outcomes for these folks. And not displacing people willy nilly. This is really, hey, we need to find a better outcome for you. Let's get you reunited with your family. Let's get you back to your support network. Let's get you into some type of housing program, really finding these improved outcomes. The tools we use, coordinated entry into into social services. We have access to the two responder fund, which is a fund. Based by nonprofit group here in Thurston County, provided to to most first responding agencies who contribute to this. Really allows us to buy a couple gallons of gas for somebody. Get somebody, sometimes we buy a hotel room, sometimes we buy clothing, do a number of things with that fund. Same thing with the Passion Care Fund, that gives us a little a little more oomph to our our funds and a little more reliability to them. We use the MOUs with Wash Dot, like I said, and Department of Ecology. Our camping awareness has been very effective when applied properly. And again, enforcement is usually the last thing we need to do. Really work on that community caretaking function, which is really where we come from here at the Lacey. And the city of Lacey, Lacey Police Department, then of course trespass notices as appropriate. These are just approximately forty of the providers and partners we work with. You'll recognize many of them, Community Action Council, of course, and Drexel House, just to name a few. We really go deep to find solutions to to people and find them better outcomes. Jimmy and Justin have even gone so far to find spaces in RV parks and things like that to find some unique solutions for folks that were really in a hard spot to really get them a better outcome and a stable spot where they could work on getting permanent services and a better housing solution. So some challenges and action opportunities moving ahead. Obviously, COVID nineteen, the pandemic has had a big effect. CDC guidance says not to move homeless encampments, right? So but letting people live in inhumane conditions isn't right either. So that's why we really work to find more humane and better outcomes for folks and getting them united with services. So we've really worked on that quite a bit. As I mentioned, the study programs have been working on reducing jail populations, but often without housing plans. This has just aggravated this situation. We really reimagine policing. And we were trying to transition our homeless outreach to a non police entity, much like MOT. We're not sure that's the final solution, but there's a lot of conversations among state representatives on what that might look like. So we're in conversations with them as well to really find that new era in policing and what's the best solution. As you know, there's a lack of short term shelter and transition housing and long term housing solutions. However, I think that we're really working towards some long term solutions, both short, medium, long term. And I really appreciate the work that's being done by that, by a lot of the entities that are on this on this presentation and listening to this presentation. There's a shortage of substance abuse and mental health, mental illness treatment, working to increase capacity in that system. But again, there's just a lack of capacity right now. We do have homeless folks moving into the area from out of state and out of region. Very common for us to contact folks and ask, hey, how'd you how did you get to here? What's going on in your life? What's going on? We find out they're really from outside the area, they're not local. These word goes out of the grapevine that there's. You get this benefit or that benefit or this handout and they just kind of move into that direction and we find some folks here just by happenstance. The new legislation related to policing in twenty twenty one from last year, also the Blake decision have had a dramatic impact on the homeless community and how we're able to handle certain things. So we've had to really work on that, work on our response. The mobile outreach team has really been a big asset and helped us in that vein. So we really appreciate that. And unfortunately, some local nonprofits, not the ones listed on my screen before. But they actively encourage folks not to work with the police, which is really counterproductive to finding improved outcomes. We really try to work in partnership with folks to to really improve the outcomes for folks that are suffering in our community. So next step, some moving forward, really monitoring the existing sites for our new campers. We ask to totally locate any new sites or any new folks and we try to offer them services. The mobile outreach team goes out and contacts those folks. And really starts to create those relationships and that ongoing continuity of care and case management so we can really find a better outcome. We continue our services, this is multiple times a week, as I said, to identify homeless folks. We continue to enforce our existing laws and we as we transition to the mobile outreach team as a primary source of contact with our homeless individuals that aren't involved in criminal activity. And with that, I will stop sharing my screen.
You go back.
Go back.
Slide fifteen.
There you go. Yep.
And. That's seventeen, but I wanted that one too.
I'm sorry, that's slide fifteen, but am I wrong? Which one did you want to see?
Oh, there we go. That's it. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure I got to save that one. One second there.
Then you want to have any questions while looking at this screen here? Go ahead and speak up since I can't see you.
Questions and comments, if you don't mind. First of all, Chief Almoda, thank you for your presentation. I really appreciate all the information you provided us with this afternoon. It's very evident that you and your department have worked really hard to create additional partnerships and additional solutions. And I very much appreciate that. The reduction of camps is evident in how you've created partnerships and relationships and continue to build strong and new relationships in our community. I do wonder a little bit about the other side of the coin, about the assurance for our citizens and our businesses and how that's being handled as well.
Well, as far as messaging, we're really working on getting out. I talked to several community groups about our efforts as we as the mobile outreach team has been approved. Frankly, I really cheerlead quite a bit. I really appreciate the the work by city council and by Scott Spencer, city manager, who has really helped spearhead a lot of these agreements, the MOUs with Wash Dot and DOE. You know, really, the police department has really received incredible support from the city council and from the rest of the state, really the rest of the departments here in the city. Yes, it's not just the police department, it is a citywide effort. We just happen to be the kind of the visible piece of it. The rapid response team, I mean, I can't tell you how big it is to get all the shopping carts off the streets. I mean, it's just a big deal. And so that's just so important and picking up debris, cleaning up cleaning up graffiti. It really adds to the quality of life in our city. So but like you say, it's important to get that message out. So I'll be working with Public Affairs to really start talking about some of the results of these efforts over this over this program, which is really in its infancy. We're only in the first six weeks of them being out by their on their own. But we really frankly, have had some really great successes. Again, they're doing interactions so law enforcement doesn't have to. That's really the impetus to find the new policing legislation. We really want to right size our response as a city to to our calls. And making sure that, you know, law enforcement is working on criminal issues and we have a different entity, whether it's mobile outreach team or something else, really working on our social service programs and then bringing law enforcement and we need to help with the community caretaking function and mental health and those type of things.
Yeah, I was wondering about one of the points that you made, Robert, where you have nonprofits that will not work with police. And I'm wondering, not only outreach to that group, but what is the motivation behind that non cooperation with police?
Well, it's it's kind of different. There's a bunch of different motivations for it, frankly. For example, we have folks that like to leave pallets of food for folks at encampments or nearby where they think homeless people gather. So it's uncontrolled distribution of food generally comes in, the food gets very messy. It's generally put on private property so and the private property owner doesn't realize it's happening and they get upset about it because now it's misuse of their property. It attracts vermin and other issues. And so that's kind of one of the problems. And so we try to say, hey, can we work with us and we'll find a better way to distribute the food product? And hey, maybe this isn't the best food product. Maybe there's a better way to do this. That's 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 more efficient. And a lot of times they don't want to hear that. They just kind of want to do their own thing. So I'm not really sure of all the motivations for it. You know, some folks have an inherent distrust of law enforcement for a variety of reasons. But and, you know, all it can do is really show that we really act in good faith. We're not looking to displace issues, really, really working to find better outcomes. Some of you know the story. I before I was the chief of police here in Lacey, I worked in Santa Monica for twenty eight years. One of my jobs is working undercover as a detective. And I went undercover in the homeless community in Santa Monica because they were being preyed upon by various people. And I really got a good insight into homelessness when I was working undercover. And it really opened up my heart to homelessness and finding better solutions. And realizing it's not this homogenous community, it's really varied. And there are folks that often they're by happenstance and just need help. And sometimes you just got to get them to a point where they can accept that help and then move into a better outcome.
It's not political in nature. It's this is just separate and apart from that.
Yeah. Ed, you got something?
Yeah, first of all, Chief, outstanding work. That's a great report. Great to see that this is making a huge difference in such a short amount of time. But I'm going to go on a different note here. I want, if you wouldn't mind, if you could share with us why you're why you got a T shirt on today.
As you know, October is is breast cancer awareness, so all through October, we've been wearing pink ribbons. We've been wearing pink ribbon masks, pink T shirts, really to highlight that, you know, during the pandemic, folks kind of forgot or forewent getting their examinations and so. forewent getting their examinations. And so a lot of people have had some, unfortunately, some real dramatic diagnoses that really could have been prevented and found early on with proper screening. So really trying to get folks to go out there and get their screenings. So we're trying to bring awareness to that. Starting in November, we'll be doing Movember for male-related cancers and suicide awareness. So you'll be seeing officers that are participating with more facial hair. You may see me with a goatee. It may be rather white, so I'm a little old for some of them. And, but it's all done a good fun and really raise awareness for these really important causes. And so you got something, Graham?
Yeah. Several things. First, I really appreciated the presentation, Chief. We need to get that message out. An unnamed politician not of Lacey was complaining that Lacey doesn't do anything about homelessness. And so it would be very good, both for the region and for our own citizens to really promote this and say, hey, we're really working on something. I talked to your resource team, the two of them, they were cleaning a trail. And we happened to chat about cleaning and volunteer cleaning in the community. And the last thing I would say is there is another subgroup in the homeless. I've worked with several people and these were folks who have intellectual limitations, not mentally ill, but dropped out of school, couldn't read, which pretty much dooms you if you can't read. And so that's another sort of subgroup. It's pretty small, but it's different from the mentally ill and those who choose and so on. Anyway, I'm very impressed. And let's get the word out.
I agree. I do think it's, sometimes we don't talk about whether our success is enough, you know, as a city, and I'm sure that happens as the school board. There's a lot of great things that are happening, but if people don't know about it, then, you know, it's sort of purpose. So I do think it would be great if we could turn that presentation you just gave into a social media blip that we could push out on social media. That would, that would be really great. We could do something like that.
Yes, I just wanted to say I concur with what everybody's saying and coming in from a healthcare standpoint and looking at this from a healthcare standpoint as well. I definitely appreciate that you're looking to not only resolve the issue at hand, but you're looking to also solve the problem. You know, you're taking a look at the core issues that are leading to what this is. And you're looking to, you know, make an impact on those. And again, coming from a healthcare standpoint, it's not only the overutilization of all these community resources, also our emergency departments and our healthcare centers, making sure that they're not, you know, utilized or overutilized for instances that really don't need emergency services. Because we take away from those citizens that actually do need those emergency services. So definitely appreciate the work that you're doing as someone who's passionate with mental health and ensuring that we treat mental health well. Thank you for all that you and your team are doing.
Now, the big challenge is, of course, is getting the rest of the region to adopt this same sort of model. It's really difficult when Lacey is up, you know, and investing these resources and seeing results as the slide just, you know, showed, where we're putting people into a position where they can be more successful in life. But if the rest of the region doesn't have the same philosophy, it makes it really difficult to see progress region-wide. And, and as we all know, no one knows where the borders are in our community. You know, everyone thinks that right over there by Lowe's, right in front of the, you know, North Thursday High Schools is, is Lacey and it's not. That's, you know, still limpy right there. So people don't all they see is, is the issue and they don't know, you know, who's responsible for what. So, you know, it's, I think, really incumbent upon all of us as leaders in our community to, when we're talking to other jurisdictions and your partners and we're talking to our partners, that we'd say, hey, do you see what Lacey is doing? We, you know, see if we can all get on the same page. I think that would be very beneficial. So. And if there's, does anyone else have anything real quick? Because we are over time and I want to get to the compassionate community project. Okay, let's see if we can do that real quick. Thanks, Chief. Is Jenny on? Oh, yeah, there you are.
Hi, everybody. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for having me. I am really happy to be here to talk about our compassionate community partnership for this upcoming year. I will be brief since we're already past time, but I'll go ahead and share my screen and go through just a few slides. Are you guys seeing my full screen?
Yes.
For the most part.
For the most part, we're seeing the screen that you see as a presenter. We're not seeing just one screen.
Seeing your notes, Jenny, so make sure you say something nice about everyone.
Did I stop sharing my screen now?
Yep.
Yes.
I don't know how to.
We're going to look closely at your notes.
Let me try this again.
Seen multiple screens at one time. It's the presentation mode.
Is it?
Do you have more than one computer screen?
I do.
So once you go to presentation, you want to share the screen that has just the presentation.
Did I do it again?
It's the same.
It's the same one as the notes.
My goodness. Shannon's coming in to save me really quick.
I love technology. There you go.
You're amazing, Shannon. Thank you. Okay. Are you guys seeing the full screen?
Yep.
Okay, goodness. Sorry about that. Thank you for your patience. Um, so as I said, thank you so much for the opportunity to share with you what we're going to be doing this year for our compassionate community project. This is going to be our fifth year with this great partnership with the North Thurston Public Schools and the South Sound Lacey Chamber. So for this fifth annual project, we wanted to just bring it back to the heart of what it really means to be a compassionate community. And that is really through service. We, how can we serve and support others, especially in this time of a pandemic? There is so much need in our community right now and, but there's also a lot of good that's being done. So we want to capture those moments and celebrate the individuals and groups who are serving in our community. So just a brief look back at this partnership that we have. So back in 2015, as you all know, we did sign the International Charter for Compassion. Yes.
We're still on the first slide.
Goodness gracious.
So I think you've advanced maybe, but we're seeing the first slide.
What are you seeing right now, Deb?
We're seeing the first slide. Twenty-one dash twenty-two compassionate community project.
And Monte had the same problem. He had to stop sharing and then reshare to get on that one slide. So that might be the option.
I think we're using the school Zoom account.
You're right.
To advance? Is that advancing for you guys?
It looks like it has advanced.
It did.
Now it's here of giving back.
Okay. Good. So I'll just use that. Okay, great. So thank you. Goodness. So as I said, this year we are going to be focusing on on service and that is, you know, wrapped into the spirit of giving back and what we can do for our community. And so did that advance for everybody? Okay, wonderful. Thank you. So just a brief look at our history. Two thousand sixteen, we joined with North Thurston Public Schools and we held a compassionate community forum with our community, which just kind of started that conversation and bringing these groups, you know, our organizations and our community together. And then this is just a quick look at some of our past projects that we've done. We have done fundraising for the Lacey Food Pantry several years. Initially, it was for that, you know, startup of the new site for the Lacey Food Bank. And then most recently last year, we did fundraising for the Lacey Food Pantry. And we have raised tens of thousands of dollars just through these couple of years, which is really exceptional. Two thousand eighteen, nineteen, we joined together with our community and we reached a hundred thousand compassionate acts that were recorded, which is really great. And also nineteen and twenty seasons of compassion, where each season our organizations highlighted a specific project that we did in our community. And so this year, with the spirit of giving back, you might be asking, how can I participate and get involved? But we are really going to be looking to our community and our city council and the school board and our staff to think about, maybe it's in your business or your family or just any of your circle of influences. Find a project or create one and engage in that. And we have some great, the school district was wonderful. They had some small banners created. And so you can check those out at any of the partnering organizations. So you can stop by the school district building or I have some here at the city of Lacey, the chamber has some. Come by if you've got a project scheduled, come by, pick up a banner and when you're out there, capture a moment with a picture and send it to me so that we can spotlight your great efforts in the community on our social media pages. So our compassionate community Facebook page and through Twitter. We just really want to celebrate this year and focus on giving back to our community. And here's just a couple of examples that our great police department is so good about getting out into our community. And so here they are working with All Kids Win. And I'm going to make sure to get them a banner so that anytime they, they participate and engage in our community, they can document it and we can share that. And here is the Kiwanis Club of North Thurston with their sponsored key clubs from North Thurston High School, Timberline and River Ridge High School. And they did a great job making a difference for South Sound Reading Foundation. They did a lot of hard work and it was greatly appreciated by them. So these are just a couple of examples. But we do, we want to collect as many pictures as possible. So I encourage each of you to, to think about how you might be able to get included and involved. So that is basically my, well, let's see if I can stop sharing. And start my video. There we go. So again, thank you for the opportunity to share with you what we're going to be doing this year. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Do you want to have any quick questions for Jenny? Seeing none. I see you, Deputy Mayor. Go ahead. You're on mute, though.
So quick, if we do do something, do we contact you for the banner? Is that who we contact?
You can contact me, Deputy Mayor. The district office at North Thurston has some as well, or the chamber office has some. But yes, I have some.
Okay.
Graham?
Does this include activities only within the Lacey city limits or within the region?
Um, I think within the region would be great. We just want to celebrate the good work that's being done by our community members. So if that extends outside of Lacey, that's fantastic.
Good.
Anything else?
I think my favorite part is how you're measuring by the number of compassionate acts over anything else. So I love that piece.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we reached the end of our agenda. We are only six minutes over, so that's pretty good. Got through it real quick. There's just a couple of things for the road. There's, I had a, some, some community activists who really was trying to focus in on homeless North Thurston Public School kids and asked me several questions that I didn't have, quite have answers to. Instead of going through all those questions here, I just hope that, you know, at some point I can meet with someone from the school board or you know, whoever I need to talk to, so I can run that by them. Also want to say that we're in the early stages of doing a Juneteenth event with that hopefully is going to be supported. It sounds like it's in conjunction with our, our commission on equity. I know there's a lot of work being done within the North Thurston Public Schools as well when it comes to equity. And so this might be an opportunity for this district in the city of Lacey and our commission to come together to do a presentation. So I just, I'm just putting that out there. You know, we have some time, but I just wanted to let you know about that opportunity as well. Is there anything else from the city council? Anything from, I'll turn it over to you, Gretchen. Do you have anything?
I just want to say that we, go ahead.
I was just saying, one personal preference, senior night for Timberline volleyball at six thirty. If you want to come down and see us and Sierra, and that's about it.
Can we come down and compete? Okay, back to you, Gretchen.
Yeah, I just want to say, Mayor Ryder, we're happy to have those discussions with you and that sounds like some really great partnership that could happen. And as the school board, we are very thankful for this partnership and all the planning that we do together. We've talked about some pretty big issues in a really small amount of time today. So we appreciate the issues that you shared with us as well as the feedback that you gave us. And we look forward to continuing to find solutions together.
Great. Love it. Well, as you know, we will always consider you our, our Lacey Public Schools. So that won't go away anytime soon. So we appreciate everything you guys do. With that, we've reached the end of our agenda. Great seeing everyone today. Guys, stay dry until next time. I'm going to call this meeting adjourned. And city council, if you would stay on for a second. See everyone. Good. I think that's everyone. So Scott, we're going to go into a work session here pretty soon.
Right. It's supposed to begin at five ten. There's probably a one minute. I mean, if someone has to take a quick break, I mean, you could probably say, you know, could start in five minutes, but.
Let's try to start at five ten. I, you know, it says five ten to five forty. I can stick to that because I have something I have to go to right after this. So let's see if we can just roll right into it. Is the county on at all?
They are here in the waiting room, so Alyssa can have them come in. I believe Rick is going to introduce the topic.
Great. So just a, just a quick update to the full council. This was some, a conversation that I've had with several members of this council saying, hey, we've talked about a lot this summer about what is our regional housing strategy? What are the funding sources available? What, what does the plan look like to put together? Not only maybe our recovery act plan dollars, but what other sources of revenue are out there? And how are we going to meet our, our housing strategy goals? And so since the county has a lot of those dollars come through the county for this specific issue, we asked the county if they could be gracious enough to come and sort of give us an overview. I know the regional house. I know the Regional Housing Council received a, a similar overview. And so I was just hoping that the full council could see it. So we, we know where we're at. What dollars are available? What can they be spent on? And, and can we maybe come up with an MOU or something along those lines to spend those dollars uh, regionally as well? And so that's just sort of the, how we got here. And I really appreciate, you know, Tom and, and Shelley come here and, and, and give us, uh, you know, what you guys have been working on. And, and so that's the full Lacy City Council knows where we're at. And I'll turn you over to you, Rick.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And that's a great introduction. So I will try to be even briefer than I was intending to be. Um, and as we're coming in and working with the Regional Housing Council, this kind of council has a kind of general understanding with the the structure that is. We have the Regional Housing Council, which is the uh, made up of the representatives of each of the councils and, and the county commissioners. And underneath that is a, a technical staff team that supports that. And each jurisdiction has a representative on that team. And, and Tom and Keely are, are the kind, the leads for, for the county supporting the Regional Housing Council at this point in time. I work with them on that technical team as well as um, Brad Medred, um, Tom Water and Kerry Retland and Keith Daly from Olympia. And so when trying to create this uh, framework as, as a regional housing council gets up and more organized as time goes on, one of the things we want to do is develop this uh, a permanent supportive housing or a, a draft strategy. And we formed this permanent supportive housing work group. And as the staff has been working together with our similar nonprofit supervisors to develop a framework or strategy of how we can how we can uh, build the inventory of various types of housing, shelter and capacity within the region uh, to help as a response to homelessness, but also just creating more inventory for permanent supportive housing and developing that plan in alignment with the five-year county or homeless county response plan. And so tonight, um, Tom and Shelley have been great enough to join us to kind of present that overview. And what that overview is going to look at is not only what the need is, uh, but what are the, the strategies, the type of uh, of housing or shelter that could be accomplished, whether it be a ground-up construction, repurpose or acquisition-type strategies, funding, how the funding, current funding model is, is working and providing opportunities. But then what is maybe some gaps and needs? And then also talk about to you a little bit about the operation and maintenance. So with that, I want to thank Tom and Shelley to be here. And I'll turn it over to Tom to uh, kick out his presentation with, uh, I think he has a slide show he would like to share.
All right. Thank you, Rick, and thank you, Mayor, and thank you for having us. Happy to, happy to be with you tonight. Um, so, so Rick set that up very well. Um, so he also kind of took some of my introduction and kind of background and context that I wanted to provide in terms of how the regional council, housing council came to be. So this really started this past spring with the um, the ARPA money that all the jurisdictions received. And I think also a letter from Lacey about, you know, how can we work together as a region to utilize these resources to create more affordable housing? So the Regional Housing Council tasked the, the technical team to come up with a, a strategy um, for, for creating more affordable housing and using the, the ARPA funds, this one-time infusion of, of funds. So through a series of meetings with stakeholders, uh, we developed a goal, an initial goal of to develop a strategy framework to fund a hundred and fifty to two hundred new units of permanent supportive housing. And while there's a recognition of a need more broadly for more affordable housing of all types, uh, we really decided to focus on permanent supportive housing because that's one of the critical bottlenecks we see in our system is a real lack of permanent supportive housing. And so when people are in shelter, there's not many places for them to move to because we only have you know, around, you know, in the neighborhood of two hundred permanent supportive housing units in our county. Those don't turn over very quickly, so it really creates a bottleneck to move people from shelter into permanent housing. Um, and then hopefully a permanent supportive housing is permanent housing. Um, so they can stay there for, for forever, for the rest of their lives, but um, some people do move on. So anyway, that's seen as a real bottleneck um, within our system. And so that's why there was a focus on permanent supportive housing. Um, so that was the, the task of this group was to come up a strategy to do that. I'm going to talk a little bit of funding in a minute um, and kind of go through and provide an overview of that. But some of the things that this group uh, came up with in terms of expectations were that a recognition that housing is, is really expensive, as you're aware. And that even with the substantial funds that we have coming in our community that we don't have sufficient funds um, to really do new construction of a lot of new units. And we really need to use these funds to leverage additional state, federal and private resources. So um, this is really looking at these funds as a way to leverage additional resources. Sorry, um, we also wanted to maximize the likelihood of receiving housing tax credits um, loan from the Housing Trust Fund and low-income housing tax credits. And uh, the guidance we've received from developers and nonprofits is Thurston County can pretty much expect to receive no more than one award from the state for these types of funds per year. So we wanted to strategize to make sure that we were able to access those funds, but not having projects compete um, and going after those kind of state resources. Uh, we also determined that the RHC jurisdictions should not serve as the developer or operator of these projects. Um, but we're really to provide the funding to, you know, both either nonprofit or for-profit developer, developers and operators to implement these projects. And then for permanent supportive housing, one of the things that we heard from Low Income Housing Institute, which was one of the representatives on our, our team was that permanent supportive housing projects should largely be funded through rent collections. However, there may be some modest ongoing operating gaps that will be needed to be filled. But generally speaking, the rent um, should cover most of the operating costs. We did not identify a specific target population um, for these projects. Rather, the work group recommended um, looking at projects on an individual basis, but really looking, making sure that there was a target for range of different populations that we're going to receive these. So not funding all family projects or all single adult projects, but making sure there's a mix of projects that support, whether that's families, uh, single adults, senior citizens, um, or other um, populations.
So Tom, sorry, so you're really looking at like the Coyote Village model then, because you're including rent in as a part of the housing cost, right? So it's, it's a reduced stress, it was reduced based on their income. But there is, you are expecting that this sort of permanent supportive housing to pay some sort of rent?
That is correct. So when we think of permanent housing, that there is a rent, there's a lease associated with that. Um, and then people would be paying generally, the, the rule is you would pay thirty percent of your income in rent. Um, a lot of times we look at other sources to cover that, that gap, depending on how the project is financed. You've heard of housing choice vouchers or other subsidies help fill that, um, that rent gap. But generally speaking, yes, participants would be expected to pay thirty percent of their income for rent would contribute to the project.
Thirty percent of the gross?
Yes. And that includes rent and utilities is, is combined in that. So there's a, um, for, for their housing costs, rent and utilities would be thirty percent of their, of their gross income. Is what is considered affordable and that comes from the federal government as, as a standard of affordability. Um, so under this strategy, and I want to emphasize, this is really a strategic framework. We understand that there's a lot more details that are needed as this moves forward to be fleshed out. And so this is really a framework with, with a lot of details that, that will be needed going forward. But we identified three broad categories of, or strategies to, to move forward to create that housing. The first one is through hotel acquisition. Um, and we know there's, there's funding out there specifically, other communities have, have acquired hotels using that maybe temporarily for shelter and then converting those hotel units into permanent supportive housing or permanent housing. Um, so that is one strategy we're looking at. Um, the county um, and the city of Lacey are, are currently investigating the possible acquisition of a hotel in Lacey. And so that was one of the um, strong um, projects that was considered here. There's also been talk in Tumwater of, of possible acquisition of a hotel. So that broad strategy of supporting the acquisition of a hotel is something that's identified as a, as a positive approach in this. One of the things that we can talk about a little bit is there's the initial acquisition costs, but also determine housing, even though it's a hotel and there's a bathroom and it's a lot of um, it's well structured for, for housing, to turn that into permanent supportive housing still requires some pretty substantial rehab. They don't have a kitchen unit, so you need to install a kitchen unit. Is it going to be just a studio apartment? Are you creating one or two-bedroom apartments? So there's still some substantial rehab that is needed after a hotel acquisition. Um, but that was one approach that, that we're looking to move forward with. The second approach is more traditional of, of funding new construction. Uh, new construction of, of new rental units, very similar to what Low Income Housing Institute is doing at twenty-eight, twenty-eight Martin Way. That I think many people are familiar with, that the first phase of that project is going to open up here in late December or early twenty-twenty-two. That's a, you know, I think there's sixty-four units in, in that building. And that project is probably around a twenty million dollar project. So you can see, you know, um, that we wouldn't want to fund that whole twenty million. Um, but if we can put in four or five million and leverage those other resources, um, then that can be beneficial. So looking at a new construction activity, one of the challenges with new construction with thinking about the ARPA funds is new construction, as you know, takes a long time to get off the ground. And there's a timeline around the use of the ARPA funds. So one of the things the group talked about is um, ARPA funds may be able to be used for maybe land acquisition or some initial site prep. But there may need be other funding sources to fund long-term, the kind of the construction costs because of the timeframe around the So that was the second strategy that we identified of, of new construction. The, the third strategy is, is something that still needs um, to be fleshed out a little bit more. Um, but was around purchasing existing units or master leasing of units. And so the idea was, we know developers are out there constructing market-rate uh, housing units that are under construction. You know, would it be possible to engage in discussions with some of those um, for-profit developers and saying, if we could pay you upfront X amount of money, whatever that may, could we purchase, you know, ten, fifteen or so units in your, in your building? That would either have, you know, maybe a twenty-year affordability period that we commit for the next twenty years that we can have those units and we can use those as permanent supportive housing. Or maybe for, you know, the life of the project indefinitely. So one of the things that the group recommended is um, obtaining or working with a local real estate broker to help, you know, engage in discussions with, with local developers to explore possibilities and really kind of leaving that open-ended, depending on what the interest of, of local developers would be to explore. It would be an opportunity perhaps um, with ARPA money to um, spend that money more quickly than new construction. It would not create new units necessarily in our community, but it can create new affordable or permanent supportive housing units. And so that was seen. So those are the three kind of main strategies that, that the work group came up with that were presented to the RHC going forward. And I think one of the benefits um, that we looked at is trying to use the mix of those projects to identify where ARPA funds can be most effectively used, how to strategically go after state housing trust fund and low-income tax credit projects, and then other private resources to, to leverage those. So that was what was presented to the Regional Housing Council. So some key next steps. Um, we're continuing uh, city of Lacey and Thurston County to pursue the acquisition of a hotel. One of the things that we also heard was to reach out and to obtain interest from developers and operators early on in this process. So there's interest in maybe doing an RFP or a request for qualifications to engage with developers and operators early, um, especially for new construction projects. And then some other next steps. The other one was to go out and engage with a real estate broker to further, further explore that idea of kind of how to obtain existing units. So that's a, a high-level overview. The other thing, if I can share my screen, I wanted to talk a little bit about funding because I know that's kind of of interest of, of where do we have for funding to, to pay for all this? So let me share my screen. And so this is just um, maybe uh, old hat for some of you, but for some of you, it may be new. So these are some of the ongoing funding sources that we have that come into our, into our county um, for, that can be used to support capital or operating funding sources. So the first two are federal sources of funds that we have, and that is the home program. So we receive around, you know, last year we received eight hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Um, and this is used for, for capital projects. I mean, we currently have a pipeline process where we've identified projects over the next three years that we want to fund. These are broadly for affordable housing. So those pipeline projects are not necessarily permanent supportive housing. But they are affordable housing. That can be through new construction. It can be homeownership projects. We fund Habitat for Humanity. Uh, they can also be for, for rental assistance um, or rehabilitation of existing properties. Um, we also have the CDBG Community Development Block Grant. Uh, we know that rotates in the county between Lacey, Lacey, Tumwater and the South County. We are in discussions about kind of using those resources for housing. So those can be used for housing. It cannot be used for new construction from activities. There is a limit on that, but they could be used for acquisition and support other housing-related costs. We also have a local document recording fee, which is known as twenty-sixty. This is specifically for affordable housing and we collect around four hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand per year in this local document recording fee. The home, the federal home program requires a local match. And this is the funds we use to provide that local match for those funds. So a lot of times we pair that twenty-sixty money with the home money um, to fund those projects because we need that local match. Um, a relatively, a pretty new source that you may be familiar with is the fourteen oh six funding. Um, this is the, the retention of sales tax dollars that, that jurisdictions can keep to, to support a new construction of housing or the operations of new permanent supportive housing units. Um, under the Regional Housing Council, the jurisdictions have signed a, an agreement, an ILA to pool those resources. So we think when we combine all the jurisdictions, collections together, we'll have around eight to nine hundred thousand dollars per year for this, under this revenue source. Those can be bonded. And that, that fund source will last for the next twenty years or nineteen years, I guess. That can be used for capital and also that can support, as I said, operating costs for new permanent supportive housing. Um, we have another document, local document recording fee known as twenty-one sixty-three. Uh, we, we bring in, that's really increased over the last years with everyone refinancing their homes. But they're around two and a half to three million dollars a year. That is not intended for capital, for new construction costs, but it can be available for, for operating costs. And this is what the primary fund source we use to fund our current homeless crisis response system. And then a new document recording fee that was passed this year known as twelve seventy-seven is just coming on board and we're still learning a lot about this fund source. Um, it is not intended primarily for capital, although it can be used for acquisition costs. Um, but it is another source of, of operating funds. And we expect, um, we received a little bit of this money this past year, just recently, one point six million that was designated for hotel vouchers and rapid rehousing. Um, but we expect to receive the remainder of that in early twenty-twenty-two. And we'll find more out from Commerce around how to use those funds. And we're, we're projecting that, that will be around three to four million dollars per year um, in those sources that we'll receive. But that's still, still a little bit unknown. So those are ongoing kind of steady sources of funds that, that we do receive. Other one-time funds that we, we've, we will be receiving kind of as a result of, of COVID and ARPA is under the ARPA, we're receiving a, a grant of just over three million dollars under the home program. Um, so this is a one-time allocation for, for home. It's a, has a broader use than just the home program, which is purely for affordable housing. This can be used for non-congregate shelter and uh, established shelter as well. So a little broader definition, but a one-time infusion of, of home ARPA money that can be used for capital costs. And then the, the broader ARPA dollars um, that's, that everyone is familiar with. Um, there has been um, discussions with jurisdictions of committing some of this to uh, to affordable housing activities. So based on what we've heard, kind of a soft placeholder is around fourteen to eighteen million dollars that's available in our region um, to spend on affordable housing. And so I think that's what really drove the, the development of that framework is how do we want to spend this fourteen, eighteen million dollars? Um, and those need to be spent through, need to be expended by twenty-twenty-four, if I'm understanding all those rules correctly. So that's, those are kind of a big picture of our one-time funds. We've received other funds. That's not all the funds the county receives. We received a lot of rental assistance um, and some other funds, but those are the ones that are available really for affordable housing or, or capital projects. We received a lot of rental assistance and some other funds, but those are the ones that are available really for affordable housing or or capital projects. So the other, what I wanted to mention addition is there's other potential sources of capital funding. So certainly jurisdictions can offer local incentives to to developers through, you know, waiving impact fees and connection fees and tax assumptions and density bonuses. And I know all the jurisdictions, as a result of the the housing needs assessment of coming up are coming up with their their housing plans and incorporate some of these elements. So, you know, those may be a little unique to Lacey, Olympia, Tumwater, based on what those councils decide. But those are resources that that jurisdictions also bring to incentivize development of affordable housing. There was also a a fund source from the state this year, a state rapid capital acquisition fund that was specific around acquisition of hotels. These funds are are quickly kind of going away. There's a second RFP that's that's out. So if we were to access these funds, we would need to move pretty quickly. It's it's a little tricky. It's supposed to be rapid capital acquisition funds, but in order to apply for the funds, you need to have either site control or a purchase and sale agreement in place. So you know, it's, you've got to be pretty far down that process before you can apply for those funds. And there, I think there's going to be one more round of this funds and they're pretty limited in in early twenty twenty two. So I'm just going to scroll to this this last slide a little bit, just to kind of give you a sense of what we are looking at. And so feeling like the ARPA funds are a good fit for hotel acquisition and even some initial hotel renovation costs. Long term operating cost, if you were to operate that as a shelter, you would need another source of of funding to do that. If you were to convert that to permanent support of housing, because that's a pretty substantial investment again. Whether the ARPA funds could be utilized in time to to convert those funds to a permanent support housing may be less viable, and so you might need another source of fund. We use this slide for the county commissioners as a possible source. But certainly there's, you know, there would need to be another source besides ARPA to look at the long term funding. Land acquisition site prep, those are activities that perhaps are a good use for the ARPA funds. Perhaps the purchase of existing units, if that's can be accomplished within the next couple of years. Also for ARPA funds, long term, if you wanted to do that over, you know, years from now, you would need another source. And then affordable housing, new construction probably is not the best match for for the ARPA funds, given just the timeframe of how long new construction takes to happen. So that's a that's a high level overview. As I said, this is really a framework. We know there's lots more details as we go to implement this plan that need to be worked out. But that's kind of what we've presented as a starting point and looking forward to to moving forward with with the Regional Housing Council. So that's, sorry, I probably went a little longer than I hoped, but happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? So obviously, I know Lacey is pursuing the hotel acquisition and I I hope that's successful. This is the sort of, I haven't heard deep discussions about what the rent would cost, so on and so forth. But it's not like I'm opposed to that. I was just, it'll be interesting to see how that all all plays out. You know, there, from what I know, there's at least, I think, three other hotels that are for sale in our region. And it sounds like from the latest reports, it's the port might not the enthusiastic, I'm not sure what, can you have any more information on the other hotels? And and why would, why we as a region wouldn't jump on trying to purchase those immediately?
Yeah, so I don't have a lot more insight in terms of the the Tumwater property than what was in the paper. We've been asking, so we haven't, but the county has not been deeply involved in that. We've been keeping our ear to the ground to to try to learn more, but so I don't have any more insights for that property, other than I know the hotel owner is very interested in selling that property. She actually called me yesterday and said, will the county be willing to to purchase this? And I think I said, yeah, if we could get over that hump of eventually wanting to create kind of permanent housing. And there's an issue with a port in the F A A in order to do that.
Yeah. She called me yesterday, too, actually. So, yeah, and the thing is, is if any sort of even short term housing there that would still keep it under the guidelines, it'd be better than not adding any additional low and lower income housing to our stock. So it still makes a lot of sense that one way or the other, that those hotels should be purchased. It just, it's easy, it's already there. Yeah, there needs to be a little bit remodeled done, but you're immediately putting units online.
Yeah. And so some of it is understanding those F A A rules of what I think it can be used as a hotel. We might be able to use it as a shelter. But whether it could be something like transitional housing, I think we would need further exploration. The county last, last year, we did, we actually worked with a real estate broker to try to identify what hotels would be possibly interested in in selling. At that point with the the C R F funds, there was an interest in acquiring a hotel for a quarantine and isolation facility. At that point last summer, we were not finding a lot of hotels that were interested in selling at that point. And, you know, similar to you, Mayor, we've heard rumors that other hotels may be, you know, willing to kind of sell. And I think, you know, under the strategy, we would be very open. And I think it would make sense for, you know, jurisdictions to keep their ears open. And I think that's where working with a real estate broker can help maybe identify some of those opportunities, because I think that those are good opportunities to continue to to look at. So we're we're familiar with the one in Lacey, and I think it'd be smart to kind of keep our ears open for others.
Is there any other, is there any other questions from this council? Yeah, I think you gave a pretty good overview. I guess the one question I I I still keep going back to is, for example, how much is it costing Coyote Village to provide the the services that they do for for their residents? I mean, because what we're really talking about here in this circumstance is is that type of a model where, you know, at least some of the units are paying thirty percent of their of their income towards towards, you know, towards the rent. So what is the cost then?
I don't know Coyote Village's budget specifically, but I can talk about a little bit. If you look at Catholic Community Services, they have a permanent supportive housing project right next to kind of Drexel House or a part of Drexel House. And I know the county funds that we provide them around eighty thousand dollars a year in funding to supplement their operating costs. Now, obviously, their operating budget is much broader than that, but they're collecting rent from from those residents. I don't know if there's other sources they have that contribute to that. But the primary source of their operating costs are those rents that they're collecting from the residents. And we do help fill in some of those gaps to kind of to to fill that in. But what the by the large part, that's those operating costs are being covered by the rent that they're able to collect. And so I think that Drexel House example is a is a pretty good one. Coyote Village with the tiny home model is a little different.
Yeah. But well, because it'd be interesting to know what, for example, in Lacey, if we purchased this hotel together, we do, we figure out the remodel costs, what what are going to be the ongoing expenses there under this model? And then what other opportunities are immediately available out there as well? Because at the end of the day, I keep hearing that there's there's this funding gap, but I I haven't seen it on paper yet.
And I think, sorry, go ahead, Rick.
Also, just to interject on on the like the hotel acquisition and and what that ongoing cost would be, that's one of the reasons Tom mentioned this presentation, too. As we start looking at acquisition, also talking to the service providers to make sure, one, it fits those needs and we can get it, understand the cost, but also if we do any remodel, it's it's meeting the program versus doing something and having to not getting it quite right. So having that early conversation will help you find those costs before you actually go through with the the final acquisition step.
I think the other challenge is that a lot of it really depends on each project. Each project is really unique in terms of how it's financed. So a lot depends on how that, if you're able to provide one hundred percent financing, then that reduces, you know, you don't have a mortgage that you're having to pay. And so if you have to go and, you know, it's a mix of public and private sector funds and you have a mortgage that since you're paying off, that's going to dictate, you know, okay, what do our rents need to be? So there's, and and then what the target population is, are we really, are we going to target this? So those who making thirty percent or below the area median income, thirty percent of the rent is not very much. Then we may need to find other subsidies. But if this is for folks who are making sixty percent of area median income, they're going to be able to provide more rent. Therefore, we need, you know, we don't need as much of a gap to kind of fill that out. So it's it's hard to talk generically because it really is so unique kind of project to project on how it's financed. And then what is the target population and income level that they're going to serve?
That's very true.
Also add that the Housing Authority of Thurston County is a really important partner in a lot of our permanent supportive projects that we do have because they can leverage and bring to the table head funding such as Project Choice voucher program as well as those those other choice vouchers that Tom referenced. Some people commonly may know those as section eight vouchers. And project base is a little bit different, but similar model. And that can help subsidize the the rent for both the eligible client as well as the the property owner.
Hey, Tom, I know you provide this information at the Regional Housing Council. Can you provide a summary of what permanent supportive housing is in the pipeline? And what do you think is the the gap that's still out there that exists?
Yeah, so the the permanent supportive housing that's in the pipeline is we're working on phase two of the Lehigh Martin twenty eight twenty eight Martin Way. And so that's the next, so they're they're completing their sixty four units and they're going to do another building of phase two on that that same site. So that's the other large permanent supportive housing that's kind of hasn't been kind of funded yet or fully funded. They're going to the, they're going to the state this year to receive their tax credits. We also know Family Support Center. We hope to break ground in twenty twenty two. They're building a permanent supportive housing project. So so those are two large projects for our community that will be moving forward in the next year. We initially identified kind of a need of around five hundred units of of permanent supportive housing. We're kind of at, you know, in our five year plan, we're pretty close to two hundred and fifty units that have been kind of identified as part of that process. So we're looking to add another hundred fifty, two hundred units, trying to get trying to add another kind of five hundred units was was the goal, was the initial kind of big hairy goal that we were trying to reach. And then we kind of scaled, you know, trying to get as close to that as possible.
Benny?
Yeah, Tom, can you talk a little bit about on that that fourteen to eighteen million in the ARPA fund? The the breakdown of that of where that's coming from? I'm assuming you're using the numbers from the R H C meeting yesterday?
Yeah, and so what I've heard is a million dollars from Tumwater, two million dollars from from Olympia. Thurston County, I've heard five to nine million dollars. And so that's where some of that flexibility, I don't know, Shelley, if you've heard any more from the commissioners on ARPA, but I've heard between five and nine million dollars. And then I heard from from Lacey last night up to your your six, six point eight million or whatever that that number was.
Thank you.
But while leaving a little bit of of wiggle room in there, because I know those are kind of soft commitments from some of those jurisdictions.
Thank you.
Hey, does council have any other questions? And thank you so much, Tom, and Shelley, good to see you. I know you're always working hard.
Thank you.
Okay, well, see.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom, thank you, Shelley.
Anything for the road, Scott?
No, no, I just appreciate the county providing the information.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
Would we be able to get his slides? Yes?
Yes, I I'll be able to provide those slides to you as soon as tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, I I guess the next steps is for us to, okay, let's let's look at the Lacey Hotel. This is the first time I we've ever really talked about it and opened about what that actual structure is going to be. We've, we've had general conversations that we want to be, you know, supportive housing units. We haven't really talked about, is it going to be long term permanent supportive housing units? What's the percentage? You know, I think in the back of my mind, I've had, you know, maybe a top couple of floors being possibly permanent supportive housing that you can go in do that long term, that the lower, you know, maybe a couple of lower floors be a a a place where you're you're getting people off the street into a supportive housing type of situation where they maybe they they don't have any rent to contribute at the beginning, but it's a, it's a step on the way up the up the floors, so to speak, to a permanent supportive housing where they could pay rent in the future. So it'd be really is to see all that that math play out and try to figure out what the costs are and then see what it's going to take to replicate that exact same, those same amount of units on the next project. And then then identify the next project as well.
Yeah, I think it's fair to say that we just don't know for sure. I think in general, there's been some discussion, maybe in between staff about, let's just say you have a sixty room hotel, could a third of those rooms be permanent supportive but more independent living? So that's, I think, a category where you could pay rent. But maybe your first and second, two thirds, you're going to have folks that are maybe less independent and may require maybe a full subsidy. So that's, that's an unknown and we're not quite sure the next.
Rick?
Yeah, and and we've had at the staff level, we're trying to figure out how the how to program an acquisition such as that. And we've had some conversations with some folks down in Clark County in the Vancouver area that have gone through this with the hotel and and the idea was nearly need for isolation and quarantine, found out that need wasn't as great. So then he started converting. And so some of the things we have to look at when we start looking at a combined shelter, because you don't think they need that capacity just for overnight con or get care, but shelter. But you do have to have some type of version. And what does that mean in terms of the design of the interior? So you might be able to start something with a very simple remodel, start trying a service. But then in the longer term phase, look at revamping some of those upper floors to have a different type of service or permanent supportive housing. You know, look at how your entrances are, your your security. And you may need, depending on what the mix of of services that's been provided, may have to have a couple of different operators that can work together for those different components, because there are different needs. And there's another piece out there, too, that could be a potential with the 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 council has been approached by the Salvation Army at their plans for their grant application for veterans homelessness, and they can also be a part of that as well. So there's all these different places that we're trying to figure out the staff level to develop the strategy. Some of that's articulated in this draft strategy framework, but it's being refined as we get more information to figure out what what.
When do you think you're going to be able to come before council with an outline of of the next steps, what what's going to cost? Revenue source and so on and so forth, so we can make a decision?
The, I will have to maybe sit down with with Tom and figure out what that looks like. And we also got to figure out also this first step of of what is the cost of acquisition and make sure that that's something we want to pursue. So I'll I'll sit down, Tom, and and work with the city manager, Scott, to figure out what schedule we can bring back for an update.
If he, yeah, I just think the sooner the better, right? I mean, we we have these ARPA dollars just sitting there. I I'd rather put them towards acquisition and 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 start down this road and start seeing some success. And so then we, well, then have a better idea of what it's actually going to cost to be providing these services. So we can take a look at the the different revenue sources and and see if they'll be able to meet those costs as well. So but and we're not, and at this point, it looks like we're not going to know until we do it. And so the sooner we can do it, the better we can have an idea of what it's going to be.
And we want to make sure all, you know, we're going to probably partnering with the county and and then make sure all all it, the parts of the organizations know what's going in. So we also have the acquisition cost, but we want to make sure we we can identify funding approach for the ongoing operation maintenance to make sure we have funds that are flexible enough to be able to spend for that and that they can be long term. So, yeah, those are all being being together.
Well, it makes it a lot easier if they're paying a little bit of rent. So anyway, and then then I hopefully we can, I think that the the county is going to take some leadership roles on on acquiring the other hotels, too. It'll be just a shame to see the hotels going for, you know, that many units you could put online in a relatively short period of time relatively inexpensively compared to building new. And to have that not come to fruition is is crazy, in my opinion. So I I hope someone needs to take a leadership position on it. And if it's if it's not the county at this point, I'm not sure who it's going to be. So anyway, okay, well, it's good information. I still feel like we need more information on the what the, how this is all going to play out. And hopefully we can get it as soon as possible. Okay, good seeing everyone. Just a reminder to the council, I will not be, I'll be out of town. I'm going on vacation and I'm trying not to work on vacation for a change. And so I'm planning on making the the meeting next Thursday. And so I'm planning on making the the meeting next Thursday, but that depends on my Wi Fi signal. So it's going to be a little bit up in the air, but Deputy Mayor, you're you're you may need to step in, you know, I'm be out of town for a little bit. So Scott knows my dates.
Okay, sounds good.
Good seeing everyone.
Hey, Andy.
Yep.
Yeah, good luck on election night. Yep, you shouldn't need any, but you know what I'm saying? I'll be thinking about you, brother.
I I'm just.
Later.